Call this April 15, 2014 work session of the Brookhaven City Council order. Madam Clerk, if you please call the roll.
Yes, Mayor J. Max Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Rebecca Williams, District One.
Present.
Councilmember, District Two, Jim Meyer.
Here.
Councilmember Bates Madison, District Three.
He's be fifteen minutes late.
Okay, and Councilmember Joe Gabia, District Four.
He won't be here until the later meeting.
Okay, but we have a quorum?
Yes. Okay. I have no open remarks. Marie, did you say you wanted to change up the way we did this, this time?
Yes.
From the future, too?
Hello, hello? Okay, yes. Am I on?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Always on.
What I would like to do, and what I would suggest that we do is we go through the work session agenda first, because many of these items are discussion items with you, so that we're looking for consensus, so I can put this on a follow-up agenda. Our last meeting was a very long meeting, and we were really not able to cover a number of items in depth, as I would have liked, on the work session agenda. So, what we've done in the past, we immediately go into the work session, but we switch over to the council's regular agenda. So, I'd like to start out with the work session agenda, and then when we finish that, we'll then head to the council's agenda.
Okay. So, review of Chapter Four.
Okay, so, we have a number of items under the upcoming agenda items, and many of these will involve text amendments to the ordinances that I would, it's my hope that those that don't have to be advertised formally, such as a zoning ordinance amendment, which we don't have any of those here, and that includes building regs, that's not what the ordinance is. That's right? Yeah, good, okay, just wanted to confirm. All right, so all of these should be able to be on our next agenda, so that way we can take care of the text amendments, if that's your desire. All right, first up, alcohol beverages ordinance. If you'll recall, many months ago, you all wanted, actually after the chief was hired, and prior to that, we had an open forum with our businesses to talk about pouring hours. And the chief came on board in April. Is it your anniversary already? Happy anniversary. All right, his one-year anniversary. He came on board, and you all wanted to give him time to really assess the situation, and especially after we ramped up with our police force in July 31. So, we've had a number of months now, he has reviewed, and he's here to present to you on what his recommendations are for pouring hours, and how they compare to surrounding jurisdictions.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Last meeting, we got into it briefly, and what we did this time was, we completely went through all the reports again. We made it from 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM, and what I did was, we put it in a graphic format, because I'm a visual type guy, and it's easier for me to understand and see something up front. So, everything's pretty self-explanatory on here. These are the actual calls, 785 calls for service that we've had between those hours, and it's broken down by crimes against persons, which you see was pretty serious, 71 crimes against persons, and it's broken down further by aggravated assault, battery, obstruction, robbery, and sex crimes. Disorderly conduct, public intoxication, marijuana possession. We ended up with two, we implemented our new fingerprint identifiers, and we were actually able to arrest two people who gave us false names for, that were wanted for murder. We also issued 410 traffic violations during that time, which is more or less kind of unheard of during those hours. I mean, you end up with usually DUIs, and not that many cars on the road, but it just shows you that there's a lot of traffic out there. One of the things that was brought up last time was, why would we be picking on all of the alcohol establishments when only five or seven of them are causing problems? If you really look at it, it's, the actual problems aren't occurring at those locations, it's throughout the city. Beaufort Highway, Peachtree, Dresden, the traffic, we ended up with car break-ins, they tremendously increased this past month throughout the city, and I contribute a lot of that to it.
How do you do that? How do you attribute the crime to the clubs being open?
More people out, more advantage, more people. A lot of the clubs are having, they're using, they're overcrowded with their parking lots, their parking in other lots, and the cars are getting broken into. One night, we had six cars, I believe, at Rush, Rush just two weeks ago, 4:30 in the morning. We've got video, but you can't see it that well, but four people threw a Molotov cocktail on their deck, and completely burned their deck up, and part of their wall at the outside. So, it's just issues like that that are going on.
Chief, I'm just a little confused from the previous report you gave us. It looks like you extended the date through the end of March, before it was at March 18?
Right, we just updated the whole thing, and for some reason, they went from 2:00 until 6:00, just to give us a broader range. And we included traffic violations in this one, which we didn't have in the other one.
Okay.
So, there's a tremendous increase.
Before, it was 332 police-related reports and 184 serious arrests, and this is quite a bit more, so is that because of the traffic?
Traffic arrests are included in this number.
Okay.
The other thing we did after last meeting was, we've actually researched and looked at some of the clubs that were staying open to the full extent, to the end hours. And as you know, the alcohol hours end at, the serving hours end at 3:55, Monday through Friday, and they're allowed to consume their alcohol for 30 minutes after that, and they're supposed to be closed an hour after that. So, 4:55, or roughly 5:00, is the actual closing time. We've had two clubs that actually stayed open till 5:00. That's Icon and Don Polo. Cream stays open till 4:30, and there's about five or six that stay open till 4:00. Those are all on Beaufort Highway. We did have a few of them that stay open till 3:00 or 3:30. That was latest in the other areas of the city, and that includes Hudson Grill at 3:30, Blind Dog at 3:00.
Was that their last call, their closing time?
That's when they closed.
Okay.
Completely.
At 3:00?
Yeah. So, and that's, I believe that was our recommendation last time, was stop serving at 2:30, and, you know, out the door, close at 3:00.
And right now, it's stop serving at 3:35?
It depends on what day it is, that's the other thing we'd like to clean up, because it's, officers usually have to look at the books all the time, because Monday through Friday, serving hours are 9:00 AM to 3:55. Saturdays, it's 9:00 AM to 2:55, and Sundays, it's 12:30 to 2:55.
So, they're serving till 3:55, and they're closing at 4:55 or 5:00, some of them are closing.
Right.
So, our hours, Monday through Friday, serving to 3:55?
Right.
What is typical in other jurisdictions? Is it you quit serving and you close? Do people, is it generally, you give people a half an hour to finish their drinks?
A lot of places will give you half an hour to finish your drinks.
But it sounds like we're giving them an hour, or is that what the cab did?
We're giving them a half hour to finish their drinks, but then we're allowing them to stay open for another half hour after that, before they completely finish.
So, should our ordinance say, when you have to, like, drop dead, close, be out of there, close the doors, everybody gone?
It'd be easier than for us, because we know at that time, they're supposed to be closed, and there won't be anyone drinking.
And I think the suggestion is 30 minutes after last pour, so it's 2:33 versus now the 3:55.
Right.
Yeah.
For 25, 4:55.
Yeah.
Program we have.
And if you remember, last time I gave you a sheet showing the different hours from the different cities, and it falls in line with everyone, with the exception of the counties. Atlanta just recently changed their hours, I believe it was a year or two ago, to 2:30. Shambly's got a 1:00, stop pouring. Sandy Springs went to 2:00 AM. Dunwoody has a 2:00 AM also.
Actually, I think Shambly just extended theirs for, till 3:00.
Did they?
Yeah, they're for, but it's for a 9-year, 120-day period, while they're transitioning to the Cab County restaurants and bars in.
Okay.
And so, do these other jurisdictions, I know, like, in Atlanta, I'm pretty sure that that's 2:30 last pour. I've seen some of the clubs over there advertise, like, a 3:00 closing time.
Yeah.
So, presumably, they quit serving alcohol at 2:30 and close.
But they stay open.
Is it Saturday it's 2:55, or Sunday it's 2:55?
That's it. That was one that seemed like it was backwards, you know, on the ordinance we adopted before.
The weekends are earlier than the week.
Yeah, the weekends are earlier than the weekdays, which you would think would be reversed.
So, both Saturday and Sunday are 2:55 closing?
Sunday is 1:55, isn't it?
No, Saturday and Sunday is 2:55.
Okay.
Last call at 2:55?
Right.
Closing at 3:55?
Right.
So, the 2:33 would take 25 minutes out of a Saturday night, out of a legal Saturday night?
Say that, yeah.
The 2:30 last call would take 25 minutes out of what is, out of what is our current ordinance? Take it from 2:55 to 2:30 on a Saturday and Sunday.
Right.
Is there a reason to have it different for weekends, as far as weekdays?
I think the only requirement is, on Sundays, you're supposed to, you can't serve, you're not supposed to serve until 12:30 PM.
Would you prefer it be the same across the boards?
For closing, yes.
Yeah, seven days a week.
Just makes it easier.
So, you mentioned before, I haven't heard you say anything about this today, that aside from all these arrest reports and other things that go on during that time period, I mean, we don't want to be, we want to be a lively city. We don't want to roll over our streets at midnight.
Sure.
But, but explain to me what the toll this is taking on law enforcement in general.
Well, as I mentioned before, we checked with the local jurisdictions that either changed their hours, or have earlier hours, and what we're finding out, actually from a lot of the clubs, when the officers are out there, is people migrate, they'll end up leaving Atlanta and coming into Brookhaven. Sometimes not the best driving state when they're doing it. And the calls for service drastically were reduced in Sandy Springs and Atlanta, talking to their, you know, administration. So, I think it just helps out and allows the officers to, you know, utilize more of their time in other areas, where we're having some of these car break-ins, whether they're related to the alcohol or not, we're not sure.
Would you be, how would you think about a, sort of a pilot program, where we cut the hours back, by whatever amount, and did it for 90 days? Would that be long enough to determine if it's having a positive effect on crimes in the area?
If you did something like that, you know, and anyone could be on their best behavior for 90 days.
120 days?
At least 120 days.
You're talking about the club, or you're talking about the, what you're talking about is the problems you're all having with arrests on the road and around places? Would a 120-day time period give you enough sample to see if it's had any effect?
We could check with the numbers that we're having, with the crimes reported and other incidents that we had, DUIs and traffic violations and things like that.
So, you have a year's worth of data coming in July, or into August 1st, to be able to compare it by?
Right.
I don't quite understand the reason behind that.
Businesses, because they're gonna, some businesses are gonna bump back against changing the closing hours at all, which, you know, that's something, we have to do the right thing, we have to do the right thing, but that you're gonna have people say, I work during the day, or, you know, the only time I can, I get off work at midnight, and that's the only time I can go have a good time. We'll see if the, if there's a cost benefit, if businesses are screaming after four months that this has killed their business, you know, we have to look at something, maybe consider that. I just think we need to be...
I think with the research we had, though, there were only, you know, a handful that actually stayed open till, I think two of them stayed open till 5:00.
I think 5:00 is, to me, it's a little silly.
Right.
You quit people out in the morning rush hour now.
Right, right. 5:00 is a little, I mean, to me, that's, I think that needs to be addressed, but...
I tend to agree with the concept that we need to be consistent with the other jurisdictions, because we've heard that, and we are recoding the last call, and, you know, the Cab County, and the 2:33 has got us closing at the same time as the City of Atlanta and other jurisdictions in the area. And I mean, I don't know of many, many of the establishments that have gone out of business because of those changes, and so I think at this point, you know, to do the pilot program, the difficult thing with the pilot program is, if it's 90 or 120 days, then you're, it's ending right about the time people are thinking about renewing their alcohol license for 2015. So, we're running into a timing issue, you know, I think we either need to do it and move on, or we need to defer it and let the chief come up with, you know, additional information. I mean, it would be interesting to see what your statistics look like for the four-hour period prior to 2:00, you know? What sort of arrests you have from 10:00 to 2:00 versus 2:00 to 6:00, you know, to run these same numbers for that.
I think it's, I think it's not the arrest, but, you know, another example is the effect it's having on the surrounding community. I know Councilman Gabia just had one this past weekend, 3:00 in the morning.
I don't disagree with that.
Yeah, I mean, we get them from Shambly, we get them from our own, our own places, too.
What incident are you talking about?
It was a noise bite. It was a noise complaint about Cream Lounge. We repeated offender apparently.
I'd like for us to go ahead and put this out in some form or another, and invite, and have a public hearing or two, to hear from our business community, and get some feedback from them. I know, you know, when we talked to them early on, there was some pushback, but I think at that time, they thought we were gonna close at midnight or 1:00, or 2:00 or something. And I think, I think if we could talk about a very specific proposal of, like, 2:30 close, last call, 3:00 close, I think that we might get a different conversation.
We did, when we had that first public information meeting, at the end of that, there was a promise made by the city to reconvene the group, notify them all, and discuss what the thinking was, and the process of how we would go about doing that, to get that kind of feedback. So, we could, we could do it in that kind of forum, or, you know, we could certainly do it as a public hearing. But I think what we're gonna hear from them, and I know some, a lot of them say, yes, the closing time being different than here in the Cab County gives us a competitive advantage. And that's, you know, some of the clubs were obviously the ones on Beaufort Highway that we do get some noise complaints. Some of them were, I remember, it was Pub 71, Hudson Grill, Old Blind Dog, Baton Ball. They don't necessarily stay open, they don't use these hours necessarily, but they do on some occasions take advantage of it, you know, with holidays and things of that nature.
Well, I was rereading the Atlanta ordinance, and they build in the known holidays of, you know, New Year's Eve, St. Patty's Day, Cinco de Mayo, whatever, New Year's Eve, where you can have a much later, you know, closing time.
I think we need to float a couple proposals, have them come in and talk about it, have the public, not just the businesses, but the homeowners, come talk about it.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it's our citizens who are paying for this, you know, in terms of what the chief has said, his officers are not able to be as proactive as they can when they, you know, check businesses and do some other things to keep our neighborhoods and our businesses safe, because they're answering all these calls, but I assume we wouldn't implement this till the next permitting period. Is that right?
Probably it'd be the fair thing to do, if we did, because they purchased their licenses now with the understanding of the hours.
So, we're not, this isn't imminent, I don't think. I think it's probably the end of the year, but I would like to get this process going, so that we have this discussion over the summer, so that by the time the fall comes, we're past something, and people know that they have some expectation of what...
One thing I'd like, and this is, I almost fell earlier, too.
I got the chair this time.
One thing I, one thing I would prefer, and this is not something I'm willing to go to battle over, because it's just not that huge in the grand scheme of things, it's not that, something that's a principle thing for me, but I'd like to try going, using the Saturday and Sunday hours for all seven days. So, that way, they still keep their...
That's what we're doing.
Well, that's where, that way, they're keeping their Saturday, Sunday hours, we're not disrupting that at all, we're changing the Monday through Friday hours. If we keep it Saturday and Sunday, 2:55, 3:55, that means that they're not changing their weekend hours at all. But yet, we're getting, we're peeling off time, an hour and a half, two hours on the weeknights.
So, right now, it's 2:55 is last call?
And 3:55 close, and then Monday through Friday, it's 3:55, last call, 4:55 close, Monday through Friday, which is the 5:00.
So, you want to stay open another half an hour later than anyone else?
Right. I don't, not one, I'm just saying, I think that would, might be a sort of a fair thing to, you're not changing every day of the week, you're letting them keep their Saturday and Sunday hours, we're just peeling back the weeknight hours. I'd like to see some stats on the weeknight hours, what, how that compared to the weekend hours, if the earlier closing time on the weekend...
I think you have to take a lot of things into consideration.
Right.
People are off then, and throw people out.
I don't want to keep sending you back to give us more information, but I know Bates is gonna want to hear some more information, too, but comparing this time period to the previous few months, and the times like Jim had talked about from 10:00 to 2:00, seeing what it is there, comparing the weeknights to the weekends, all that, I think, would be very helpful to let us know, make an extremely informed decision, because we are dealing with balancing homeowners' and residents' rights and concerns, and noise problems with businesses who don't have noise problems, or don't cause a lot of concerns, and their rights to, you know, operate their business. So, I'd like to get as much information as possible comparing different times and different days.
But, but I think at the end of the day, you know, we're going through a lot of minutia for a very minor number of our liquor licenses. I mean, I'm not sure what the total number is, but we've heard from the chief that there's only three or four establishments that stay open past the 3:00 hours. So, you know, we're not necessarily, you know, we've gone completely off of considering the majority of our residents, the majority of our businesses, and their concerns and their needs, and we're now focused on three or four clubs that are, A, problematic, and B, staying open late, or to the full extent of the current hours. So, it's not like we're chopping off a bunch of people's needs, we're just, you know, we're bringing in the severe outliers, and making them more consistent with the majority of the current licensees.
Mayor.
Go ahead, Joe.
I apologize for being late. If I bring up a point here that was already discussed, please just enlighten me. I've taken a little bit of a different approach to this. Most of these establishments, Jim and I, think the number is anywhere from 12 to 16 that are late pours within our city, so it is a fairly finite number. Most of them will fall probably along Beaufort Highway here, a good number of them, especially ones that may cause concern or elicit conversation about why we may even want to make a change. I've already been in contact with several of these establishments, I've asked the Chamber of Commerce to put together a meeting of the group, Bates and I, who are going to sit down and just have a talk conversation. I'll just let you know, at this point, some of the conversations that are being had is for the opportunity for us, and this, at this point, it'd be Bates and myself, and the intent would be to have this be the format to bring to a work session, so everybody can participate. It wasn't something we were looking to just do by ourselves, but because of quarantine Share with them what our problems are, and what our concerns are as a city, and look to get back how best they think that they can address the situation, and some pretty unique things are coming up so far, such as the, and this is, this is not really coming from me, it's coming from certain members of this group right now, is, one of the points, several of the points would be making sure taxis or Uber is available at the end of the night, making sure that everybody goes through a professional training on how to make sure that they're not serving underage people, even to the point of maybe even having breathalyzer tests available for people before they exit. Because I did state clearly, and I've repeated this openly on council, when it comes to life and safety, we have to take action, and this is what we've been looking for from the chief, for verification over a period of time versus what was happening with the Cab County the previous year. We wanted to make sure we were correlating the numbers in a meaningful method. But, the unique approach that I'm trying to take on this is, not only to make sure that we understand if we want to take a different timing on a weekend, or try to make everything consistent, understand what the impact of that is from the business perspective, and then, two, share with the establishments what our concerns are, and to jointly see if there is a way that they can come back to help us answer those problems. And again, in my mind, particularly, anything with DUI is number one. That's just a situation, if it's high, if it's, if it's not healthy, there is no such thing as a healthy DUI, I'm sorry, but that would just be a real, a real red light. So, this meeting is currently being structured with the assistance of the Chamber of Commerce, and hopefully, it'll be sooner than later, and Bates and I will be getting back. My intent is to have that conversation be a good listening post, also share our concerns, and then bring it to council, and then have a meeting with those folks in a work session, and have the full council engage, and ask questions, get a response, and listen to any kind of proposals of how this organization, or these groups of people, would be prepared to address concerns that the city has, and the police has.
Are you talking about that in concert with not changing their hours, but having them do something on their end to make it so they can stay open? What do you think?
Everything's on the table. I mean, there's nothing, nothing's limited. Some, some of the accounts have said they don't mind having shorter hours.
Right.
And they encourage it. Some of them looking at it progressively, and saying it cuts their overhead, it cuts their labor costs, it cuts their liability. So, there is a range of opinions on this.
Right. I heard some of that, you know, that some don't utilize the hours, but then some of them say, well, I'd like to have the opportunity to if it comes up.
Right.
Sometimes the holiday situation's a way, and sometimes it's not, but, yeah, I mean, there are some that, who don't utilize the hours ever.
And the concept was brought in, that let the monitor, let the members of this, I'll call it an elite group here, because it's a finite number, let them monitor themselves, because when one does something that doesn't work well, or brings attention for violating the law, or putting citizens at arms' length, it's a reflection on the entire group, and it causes people like us to sit at a table like this, and have a conversation about changing things across.
For that, though, there's some will on, at least I know from Jim and Rebecca, to do something about the hours. I want to do something about them, too, maybe not to the degree they might prefer, but I think we need to float a couple proposals to let them know, hey, there's, there's a possibility that change, closing last pour is at 2:30, and you're closing at 3:00, and maybe there's a one for 2:55, and you close at 3:55. So, I think they need to hear what we might be considering, and we gotta move it along.
Yeah, you know, but I think that may be put the cart before the horse. Instead of us, I think that we owe it to a business community to hear what their concerns are, or what their positions are, and then make the decision. I think that's only the fair thing to do.
I mean, is there anything they could say that would make you want to say not closing it, not doing the last pour at 2:30?
Well, you know, I look at these figures, and, you know, I'm with Joe, the DUIs are very troublesome, but look at, look at all these thefts, aggravated assaults, battery, car break-ins, the people who are out that late are being targeted by, you know, by predators, thieves, and bad guys. And so, you know, that sets up a bad situation, you know, for the safety of the patrons going to these places. You know, months ago, the Pink Pony gave us a booklet that had supposed studies about late-night closings, and I'd be happy to write it up, a summary for you, because it was quite enlightening to me that really, most of the studies came down on closing earlier. And most of the discussions were talking about closing, like, the debate between midnight or 2:00.
Right.
Much earlier than anything we've discussed. And some of them said, well, it didn't really make that much difference to close at 2:00 rather than, you know, at midnight, but nobody in that, in those studies talked about going from, you know, 4:00 and 5:00 in the morning until 2:30.
Right.
I, look, this is not, this is not necessarily in my district, although I have, I have bars who sometimes stay open later.
Right.
I just think we have an obligation to look out for the total safety and well-being of our citizens. We asked the chief to come up with figures, he's delivered a great study to us, he's made his recommendation. I think we owe him a certain amount of respect and regard, you know, in that.
I agree with the mayor, I think we need to float a very specific proposal, and we need to open it for public comment, and if the businesses that are affected want to establish a meeting, that's fine, I think we also need to consider similar meetings with the residents that are affected, but I think we need to, we, historically, we have not gotten a response from residents or businesses until we... from from residents or businesses until we have until we have set a specific agenda. So let's.
Kind of like the.
Yeah.
Stir, kick the nest.
Yeah, let's 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 give them a time, just give them something to comment on rather than just having them. I'm not sure that I want a round robin discussion of of late night bar owners to set the course for how we.
Jim.
How we establish our.
Jimmy, the only thing I was trying to propose is that we look to address this in a similar fashion as we did with the stream buffer ordinance. We went out of our way to make sure that we had input. We took, we digested it, we went back and forth, and then we came up with a very good I think that's how we should be approaching all of this.
Yeah, I I agree completely. You know, I'm sorry for being a little bit late, but this is one where outreach and interaction with our business community is extremely important for the city of Brookhaven. And and we need to be engaging them in this dialogue. That doesn't mean that they're going to drive the conversation. It means we need to have outreach and engagement over this issue.
So we're. Let's let's do this. Let's want to just say.
We have similar outreach and engagement with with the residents of the Beaufort Highway corridor?
Absolutely.
I haven't heard that suggested.
Yeah. There are open meetings. I mean.
We need to float, I I'd be in favor of floating the having the hours be the same Monday through Friday, the Saturday and Sunday hours. Not mean, not saying that that's what I'm going to stick to, but that's something I think I would like to hear hear opinions on. Jim and Rebecca might want to float two thirty and closing at three. I think if we get that out there and say this is what the council's considering, we'll get comments from and let residents know and let businesses know that this is something we're considering because I I think there'll probably be consensus that closing at five o'clock, when you're like Rebecca said, when you're going to rush hour, people are starting to leave, you know, and the roads will be busy at five o'clock in the morning on a Tuesday and Monday, I think that's, you know, that's a no brainer, that that's probably a little too long. So in order to get this discussion started with the businesses, I would just say we're considering a couple proposals. What are your thoughts? And let the residents, put it out to the residents, put it out to the businesses, have the meeting with the businesses. And but I think if you don't put something out there that A, we're considering changing the hours, and B, kind of a rough estimate of what we're looking at, you're not going to get people as engaged.
Can I make a suggestion on that?
Yeah.
What about moving forward and looking at a couple of dates? Because not everybody can.
Sure.
On on just one specific date. And I think it is important to hear from the community at large. What I would suggest is that, you know, we we promised the business community that we would get back together with them, but we've had a number of complaints from people being affected by the the sounds of bass drums and and everything else that keeps people awake that that have generated complaints, that have generated the police going out or code enforcement officers. And I know that I've been involved in many meetings from citizens complaining about they can't sleep at night, and some of them have sold their homes because they just couldn't cohabitate with with the neighbor that that had late night hours. So what I would suggest is, you know, we need a room that would accommodate this type of forum, and Lumpton Hall has always been a great venue for us. And I think what we need to do is advertise that the mayor and council are considering the new operating hours for late night establishments and hold that meeting, invite not only the business community but also residents. We have a a great contact list, one with the chamber for all the businesses, our own list of business license holders as well as HOAs and people that have been affected that have come forward to us and said that they and their neighbors have have had undue hardship with trying to live next to a late night establishment. So we could do that and invite them all to come and and have a couple of these sessions so that you as the council can hear that. And I think we could establish that, set that up. The format would be first and foremost stating what our current ordinance is. Secondly, the findings of the chief and his recommendations and the comments, you know, from each of you that you're thinking about whether it's a two thirty last call, three p, three AM close, or if it's a compromise, whatever that is, and have those two different time sets.
Right.
And invite the public to speak.
For two meetings? Maybe one a work session, one a night, second night, and we work both nights.
Well, you know, I I think, you know, I I think this is important enough that I would not have it on any other agenda that any other item is on. I think it deserves, you know, the sole attention, and people can make an effort to come based on this very subject. And I would hold at least two of them. You might want to hold three, especially if the idea now is to retain the current hours of operation until the next business renewal cycle.
Yep.
So if that's the case, you know, this is April, and, you know, we have the summer ahead of us, and and maybe what you do is we have one a month for for the next three months, take that under advisement, and then discuss it amongst yourselves, and and we can then move forward with the public hearing process of what change you want to make, and then make that effective date beginning January two of two thousand fifteen.
All right, let's do that.
Okay.
If that's all right with y'all.
I think I think one a month, one a month might be overkill, but but I like the strategy.
Start with two if we want to do a third one.
Yes, two, and if you feel like you want a third one, and we can advertise that through our website, we'll send out e-blast.
So like residents, businesses.
Correct.
And then police too.
Could this be one of our, you know, quarterly town hall media?
Yeah, we got one coming up soon.
Right, we do have one coming for for May.
You know, I mean, I'd I'd say put it on the agenda for the town hall meeting, but, you know, there's going to be, you don't want to rush this debate.
No, I agree.
I mean, it's a big issue, and so I I think it'd be fine to talk about.
Start with our town hall and then just have a couple more.
But it needs to have a separate meeting.
Yeah, well, why don't we look at the availability of Lumpton Hall and at least give ourselves a couple of weeks so we can have proper notice to the public? And then we'll set that up and we'll make sure it's not on a a council weeknight or a ZBA because, again, we want everybody to come that that can come.
Go ahead, chief.
If I if I could add one more thing, I think it's incumbent upon all of us too, when we have that meeting, to educate or tell the business owners to review our ordinance because there's a lot of parts of our ordinance that are known as Biden by right now. There's no in for one drinks, there's no happy hours allowed, our revocation suspensions need to be reviewed to be fair to everybody, so.
I think that's excellent, and we need to review our current ordinance aside from just what the hours of operation.
We don't allow happy hour?
No.
Do we do we not, do we, is that something we want to ban as happy hour?
I like happy hour.
Every hour of the day.
I do like happy hour.
There's one over in Roswell that's a sushi place, it's great, you know, they have happy hour drinks and food.
Yeah, I mean, we've got some really nice restaurants with happy hour that that brings in a good crowd.
Right now, they're they're actually advertised, but we don't have the manpower to to deal with all of it.
Right. Well, I mean, that's news.
Maybe that's a bonus we can give them.
Just cheap drinks like two for one or something?
Yeah, that's specifically addressed in there.
Yeah.
Can you not have a differential?
I don't think you can do two for one, I mean, two for one, I don't like that, but lesser price.
You not get dollar beers at five to six or something?
I think it says no discounted.
Well, let's look at that, maybe that's something we can concede.
Yeah, I I agree.
Bring back happy hour.
Happy hours are your, happy hours are.
Five P M is good, five A M.
Happy hours are your closing hours, ooh. All right.
Okay.
You know, I would just add, chief, just to to reiterate, I think we continue want to really enforce the the noise and the and the problems. I know we've heard before from the the bar owners that it's really a matter of enforcement, the people who are who are the outlaw laws on this. And and I hate to hear the stories of the people who moved away or the, you know, it's some of the same problem clubs. So I know you've been cracking down on this, it's probably a continuing problem.
Yeah, we have to review some of the the discipline that that those clubs are going to have to face. We're still waiting for adjudication in court for a couple of the serving of minors. We did receive the adjudication in court for serving after hours, so we'll have to deal with that, but our ordinance, I think, needs some tweaking on that.
Have we cited anybody for noise ordinance yet?
I believe we have one or two.
Recently?
I I'd have to look through the records, I can't say for sure.
Yeah.
Has anybody been brought before the alcohol review board yet?
No, and that's part of the problem. Right now, the way the ordinance is, if you're cited for after hours serving, it's immediate revocation after court. And we've got a place that, two places that have done that. So we've got to review that. I mean, and then you have.
Do they go before the board, alcohol review board? I mean, they can appeal that to the alcohol review board, right? Is that what they, that it is?
Yeah.
But we haven't revoked.
And then for underage drinking, it's a suspension, and it specifies it's a Friday and Saturday, two day suspension on the first first go around, which probably the way it should be for after hours.
Well, then why haven't we revoked on those? Is that a community development issue or is that a police issue?
Or an ordinance issue. It's a combination. I think we just have to bring it forward and then serve them notice on it.
Susan, you have any?
We've been working with the attorney on it.
Oh. Oh, really?
I say that again, Susan?
The finance department is to be done. There's some, there's some confusion about the ordinance, and the attorney is looking at it.
We've been working with the attorney on it because there's a difference on a suspension versus a revocation for two for violations that are basically the same.
So let's let's try to get that cleared up. Because I think that the issue from the from the residents is noise and, you know, bad stuff going on in these clubs, but the the club owners say it's a matter of enforcing on those clubs, so let's be sure that we're.
Right, that's exactly, that's what I'm hearing too. There are people out there who are trying to do business the right way, and then there's others who really probably don't care.
And we're working on those. The other the other one we're going to work on and is going to hit all the clubs is we're working with Georgia State Patrol right now, and we're going to do massive road checks.
Right, and and I think you should, that's that's really important to do. But this consensus I'm getting from the group that I'm having conversation with, if somebody's not doing it the way it needs to be done, fine them, let them go before the alcohol review board. You know, for the ones that are doing, trying to do business the right way, the fear is they're being penalized for what another group may be doing.
So is it the attorney you're talking about, is it is it the solicitor, not not Tom?
It's our city attorney.
Our city attorney, yeah. We have to go through that and and councilman, to what you said I brought up earlier when when you were in here, it's not so much, you know, it partially is the clubs that are at fault, but it's just the patrons going to and from the clubs we're having the problems with. So it really doesn't make any difference where it's those five that we're having the major problems with, it's just people coming into town.
Tom, will you, will you, for the next meeting, will you have some kind of resolution on the revocation suspension alcohol board issue?
We will. Two, ten are pointed out, the revocation issue to me and the enforcement part of that, likely that's that's too harsh.
Right.
Could be overturned, but certainly it's a suspension, and I would look at heavy fines. And once you, once you hit them hard in the pocket.
Is that appealable to the alcohol review board?
Absolutely.
Well, let's have something resolved on that issue because I agree with Rebecca and Joe that we need to enforce what we have first, and and let's go ahead and get moving on that.
Okay.
All right.
Put that on the next agenda.
Okay, thank for an answer on that.
Does that mean next week when you say next agenda?
Yes, next week. The next two items, if we could please just discuss both of them at the same time.
Okay.
Because we have some conflicts with the two, and and what we're looking for is to be able to come back to you and and clean up the hours of operations for our contractors, especially for the construction business. We've had a number of complaints there, and and we do have a an issue with the noise ordinance versus the the building regulations. And and Susan's going to present that, but there's a couple of things that I want to add to that as a result, and just as a follow up from a meeting yesterday that I had with the mayor along with Councilman Iyer and a citizen from District Two, so about how we want to get the word out and what we want to do and and how we're going to better regulate hours of activity.
Okay, I thought you were looking for something that you were going to share.
No, I haven't.
Okay. Actually, we were talking about Chapter sixteen, which is the noise ordinance, and also Chapter seven, which is the building ordinance. The odd thing about Chapter sixteen is that although it's the noise ordinance, it references construction, demolition, and deliveries. And the hours of operation or allowed times are the same in both Chapter sixteen and Chapter seven. However, in reviewing.
What are those hours?
Monday through Friday, seven to seven, Saturday, eight to five, and none on Sundays or certain specified holidays. But the issue in looking at both the noise ordinance and Chapter seven, which is the building chapter, the first issue is noise, the second is construction and construction activity, and then the third is penalties. After having looked at Chapter sixteen and Chapter seven, what we're finding is that there there is actually more teeth for construction in the noise ordinance versus the building ordinance. After having looked at both of those, we also probably need to look at Chapter fourteen because that deals with land development. So the issues are noise, construction, penalties, and it also, when you look at those ordinances, it also talks about who can issue the citation, who it can be issued to, how it can be issued, and the method by which you issue it can also determine what your fine can or cannot be. So there are a lot of moving parts in those two ordinances, meaning Chapter sixteen and Chapter seventeen, but also in Chapter fourteen, which relates to land development.
Well, we put them all in one chapter.
Well, we we. We need to look at how to simplify it because Chapter seven also refers to Chapter one, so it kind of goes in this big circle.
Well, we just have one ordinance for construction hours and the noise in one chapter.
And fines and penalties.
Right, that's that's what we'd like to do, or at least have everything referred to the building.
Rather than going back and forth between chapters.
And then in one chapter, it says, you know, who can serve, police, code enforcement, or sound control officer. So there's a lot of moving parts, and we do need to bring them all together and clarify that and and just really even how it's served and what you can charge and things of that nature.
So what do you recommend?
Exactly what the mayor's saying, we need to.
A single ordinance?
We need to smooth it out. If if we can't make one, then they, at least all three need to be consistent in the approach.
I think a noise ordinance for clubs and restaurants is different than a noise ordinance for construction too. I mean, so I.
You don't measure construction by decibel levels, do you?
Sometimes, I mean, yeah, there's.
I mean, I suppose you could, somebody.
But in the ordinance now, but would you would for a club?
Correct, with a decibel reading.
There is a point of differentiation that you want to make sure it's finite. I mean, that is definitely there.
Right.
There's a way that, you know, we can go through this on the noise ordinance to state what the noise ordinance is is including everything but not construction, you know, residential or commercial, and then refer to that code section in the building regulations because I really would like to keep the building regulations as the governing ordinance for how we conduct business in in the world of construction. Another thing that I would like to add to that is the procedural part of how we will ensure that our builders and contractors will abide by this regulation. And some of the things that we've been talking about and working on that talked about yesterday in this meeting with the citizen who came forward with a complaint is, one, we need to make sure that, because what happens is you have the builder of the G C, and then you have all of their subs, and sometimes you have subs of subs, and.
Should all flow back to the G C?
Correct, and and that's something that we want to do. But but I think that there's also responsibility too on on the part of the sub. So, you know, we're still exploring that, but first and foremost, the G C is is the person who takes out the permit and therefore is the person that's ultimately responsible. So procedurally, I'd like to include, you know, a little bit more specificity in the ordinance that says first and foremost that on the building permit, that the G C, the person taking out the permit, will acknowledge by signature that they understand and have been given the hours of operation. Therefore, and and as a result, there's no amnesia if they're issued a citation and they go before the judge. They've signed it, they've acknowledged it, that they understood and received it. The other thing that we're working on, and I'm exploring, and I'll come back to you later, because many of these infractions occur after the business hours of the city or even before the business hours of the city when sod may be delivered or even wood. So I'd like to have a call center, and I'm exploring that, where a real person is answering the phone, that can actually direct the call to the appropriate parties. And so I'll be coming back with you on that. There's some, a number of agencies that can do that. And that way, when somebody calls after five P M during the week or on the weekends or all day during the the weekends, they're going to get somebody that they can speak to and and they can handle their complaint.
Who who would be the appropriate parties after hours?
This would be a call center. Well, the appropriate hour could be the police department.
Could be.
It also could be code enforcement, that's my next step.
Okay, yeah.
I want to talk with you, and I'm I'm working now on, we are in getting into the height of the building construction season, and, you know, we are working on right now, code enforcement officers, one for each district, so they have more familiarity, very similar to our community policing activities, but this would be for code enforcement. But during the height of the building season, I would like to have temporary code enforcement officers that are available on the weekends. So, that way, we have everything covered, and this, again, would be seasonal, so when construction activity winds down, then, you know, we wouldn't have that need. We're looking at some of the different shifts for our code enforcement officers, instead of working 8:30 to 5:00, they may come in earlier, some may leave later, but I still want the weekends covered consistently. So, that's another thing that we're taking a look at.
On the code enforcement, for the hours and things of that and delivery times and all that, is there a way we can, Chief, I know I've talked about this before, but having some officers certified to be able to cite people for those specific types of things?
I've done that in other jurisdictions. The only concern with that is when you take an officer off the road to address that, there could be a more severe activity going on and...
Then they can not go address the code and go...
Correct, I'm just saying if they're there, but we can absolutely look at that.
Chief, do we have a program where there's officers that want to get trained in this or there's some that already are, or is there a...
I think for the most part you're looking at just code enforcement, like uncut grass, legal signs and things like that, any of the officers that handle that usually code enforcement.
So, after-hours operation, could an officer cite on that?
According to our code, the noise ordinance section of our code allows an officer to cite for violations.
Apparently it says that enforced by Chief of Police or does it mean which could be code enforcement officer?
I'll just make sure that our, whatever we draft has that any police officer can do it as well.
Right. I would just like to see us do this with all deliberate speed. I mean, we've been hearing for months now complaints.
Well, it's my hope that if you're in agreement with this, we'll have this on your agenda next Tuesday.
Let's do it.
Yes, thank you.
And one other point, too, we want to clarify what constitutes after-hours activity because if AT&amp;T is there installing U-verse...
It's a permitted activity.
Correct, so, you know, we want to be sure that, you know, that's not part of...
If you pulled a permit for the work that you're doing, that's a violation.
Correct, right, but we want to explain all of that so there is no confusion.
And we want to include Chapter 14 in here, too, just to make sure they're all...
Hang on, again, you know, I'm full in favor of us moving forward with this, but I would like to engage, you know, again, it harks back to awareness, not springing this on the business community or the building community either, so we need to have, you know, just like all of our actions here, that need to be deliberate and we need to put it out there for the public to digest before we go and act on it next week.
We're not changing what is already on the books. I mean, we're keeping the hours the same, we're keeping the violations the same, all we're doing is making sure that our code is clearer and more specific as to what is a violation.
I like that, Jim. I like it. My point is...
And then taking it further and enforcing them, you know.
Yeah, I think there's some other considerations here, though, that we haven't explored. I mean, one of the things that Jim, you and I have talked about, actually, is to get to Marie's point, GCs are not in control of the subs. How do we hold them accountable? Well, I think something to consider is a point system, just like you have on your driver's licenses. So, you've got to figure out a means to tie the GC and hold them accountable, and if their subs are continually violating this, those points will rack up and they lose their ability to do business in Brookhaven. I think the same goes for other kind of code violations for builders.
I think that's easy to do and that when we rewrite the code, we have whoever is holding the permit responsible for all activities on-site and...
Let's notify our builders, by the way, before, about, this is going to be on the agenda next Tuesday to start considering this, or to get this cleaned up.
But I like Marie's idea, too, that whenever anybody pulls a permit, it's there upfront in bold writing what this is and that, you know, that we're holding them accountable.
So, when will it be on the agenda next Tuesday?
It'll be a text amendment to the building regulations.
Okay, so we need to let our builders know about that.
Right, and I didn't mention this, and I think, you know, certainly getting the word out is supreme to the success of this for what we all want, orderly development. Following this, you know, and I've been talking with Susan Cannon about this, that we want to hold, you know, forums with our builders. There's other things that we need to talk with them about anyway. I'd like to talk with them specifically about the complaints that we've been getting, the type of complaints, and why we are now enforcing further the very codes that they should be operating under, and to explain to them what's going to happen. You know, everybody has a chance to cure their problem and, you know, certainly there's a warning, but there should only be one warning, and the second time there's a call out there, you know, the penalties are going to be escalated.
Can you set a date for a builder's form by next Tuesday?
I can.
Okay, so we could have the text amendment for Tuesday and then a date for the builder's form, I would take the next week.
Right, so, just to reiterate, I would say that if the text amendment is being placed on the agenda, that it's on the work session agenda, not on a regular meeting for a vote because we need to learn this lesson. We've run into this before where we put something on a meeting and all of a sudden people think we're voting on it that next week, and that's not the impression we want to give. We've suffered, you know, negative perception from that before. I don't want to fall, us to fall in that trap again.
And I just encourage you to make sure, that's the previous conversation we had about noise, that we're making sure that we're really checking out our enforcement penalties on this, that it's really, really clear.
I'd like to, to base this point, I'd like to, I mean, I see that, you're right.
We changed our vote from a one to, from two to a one.
But on this, though, we are really not changing the operating hours or the, we're not saying, hey, we're going to change the hours. We can pass the ordinance and say, have our builder summit say, this is what our, you know, you know what our hours are, we're going to start enforcing in this manner. Come to the builder summit to hear about when we're going to start enforcing and what you can do to, you know, ameliorate any concerns you have, but if, we're not changing the effect of our law that's already in place is that the hours are going to stay the same, so they're not going to be affected, it's just that we're going to be enforcing it in a more rigorous manner, and I would like this to be voted on next Tuesday.
I would also, because if, you know, if it's not next week, then we're into the second week of May, and, you know, daylight savings time is here and people are, you know, I'm getting more and more calls with the late hours.
So, we're not changing anything about who is getting cited? Well, we might, because that's the crux of this thing, is the subs don't care.
Right.
And if we're just citing subs, I mean, look, the problem's still going to continue.
What is that going to say now?
The GC is the one who doesn't care. If he doesn't get the penalty, if he's not on-site.
The GC is ultimately responsible because that's the person who takes out the permit. What's different, if anything, is different, is this, is we're now going to require that the builder at the time of pulling a building permit acknowledge that they have received and they understand the operating hours for construction in the city. And I want to do that because if it escalates to the point that they receive a citation and they go before the judge, I want the code enforcement officer to be able to produce as evidence their signature that they acknowledge they understood.
Yeah.
And I will tell you, in a recent situation, we issued a ticket to everyone that was there. Everyone was filing, and we just gave a ticket to every...
Exactly.
Everyone, so...
And I think that's worthy.
Well, good, and if we're not changing the law, then I'm okay with this.
I would still send out an email tomorrow or the next day. We're going to be considering this on Tuesday. We'll have a builder summit the following week, and, you know, we're going to keep the hours, we're not changing hours, but the enforcement's going to be more rigorous. Let them know that.
Yes.
But do I understand that we're looking at where the code is, that speaks to this is in three different chapters and we're trying to...
Consolidate.
Four different chapters, and we're trying to consolidate it and clarify it and make it accessible so people can find it when they want to find out.
That's it. Noise from a business such as a club, some kind of activity, that should be in the noise ordinance. Contractors or construction hours, operating hours, that belongs in the building regs where they're pulling the building, that's what...
So, the goal is to clean up the code, you're going to bring that to us?
Correct.
Step up enforcement, notify the builder, building community, you have to be signing this form, have a summit, and then we need to give them a little bit of time to, you know, any new permits will be under the new regime, though, under the, having to sign it, so they shouldn't have any question about who's getting cited and what the hours are and what's going to happen, so...
Aren't they signing already when they come in? Don't you have them doing that already?
They're not acknowledging a statement of hours.
You're just handing the handout sheet.
No, they get the building permit and they state that they are the responsible party for the permit, that they are the general contractor, and they fill out where they're doing the construction work and how many square feet it is and what type of construction it is that they're filing a permit on. All I want to do is add another sentence that says, "I," and they sign their name, hereby acknowledge that I understand and I have received, I want to give them a copy of the building regs, the ordinance, and that section such and such, hours and operations that I understand, and I will abide by them.
This, you know, I don't want this opportunity to slip by. I mean, this seems to be that we're just changing administrative policy. We're not changing the law, so I'm not quite sure what we're voting on.
It's going to have...
Because it's in four different sections.
Correct.
We're clarifying...
Well, we're talking about construction hour citations. You've got business noise situations that probably should be in a different section, noise section. We've got residential, you know, noise complaints, that's probably in noise section, too. You know, I just don't want us to lose the opportunity, I think for the purpose of this conversation, we're talking construction permits, we need to address that, but we're not changing the law. I think this, there is an opportunity for us at the builder summit to talk about, you know, updating this law, which I think probably could use some better enforcement because just giving them a piece of paper when evidently the law's already on the books and they know about it, it hasn't worked in the past, I'm not quite sure it's going to work in the future, and so...
Well, what's not working is we, the staff, do not have a consistent code section for which we can issue a citation.
Yeah.
And the very, there's varying penalties, so we have a habitual violator, do we go to the ordinance that has the most strictest penalties, or do we issue, I mean, I'm looking for equity, and I'm looking for a way to say, "Building community, this is what you're being governed by."
Yeah.
This is it, and we do need to click that up.
I agree, and that's where, and that's where I think if we are, I think this is an opportunity for us to have stiffer penalties and, you know, addresses for habitual violators, and that's why I think that change we should do after the building summit so that we get consensus and buy-in.
Just get us the stuff for next Tuesday and then we'll, you know...
I'm with you on it, I agree, I know that you want to move.
If we were changing hours to 5:00 in the afternoon and 10:00 in the morning, that obviously would be something we'd have to take a lot of time to do.
Well, what steps do we take to put the message out to the building community?
Well, we have communications sitting right here.
Is it email blasts to them?
Well, it's going to be more than that. Email blasts, it'll be something on the ordinance, on our banner that we can have there. I also want to contact the chamber, we'll contact the list that we have of all licensed builders in the community as well as all real estate agents. The real estate community needs to understand this, when they're selling a parcel of land, they need to know that there are certain requirements of the city. So, anything that touches the building and construction industry is who we want to reach out to, and then, of course, you know, we will give notice through our website and we can certainly put a notice in the newspaper.
Good.
And contacting all the media.
Thank you.
Okay. Text amendment for average front yard setback?
Yes, I've had discussions with you all and I've heard different comments coming from all of you, and I think we just really need to have an open conversation on a text amendment for the average front yard setback. Some of you have indicated to me that you would like to abolish it and use just the standard zoning area regulations for which the property has been zoned, and others want to take a look at perhaps refining, maybe softening the average setback. There's also been discussion about how many lots are averaged, is it the entire street? Is it those properties that are just contiguous on either side? And there's even been conversation about the average of one. So, I'd like to talk about that, and Susan, do you want to come up and go over, we have, and you have in your packet here, there's a couple of things going on, and what we have in your packet is our most current draft that we're getting from, excuse me, from DeKalb County, as well as what our current ordinance is.
I think that you have before you what's currently being considered by DeKalb County at your...
It's one sheet.
It's one sheet, there's a diagram on the back, there's like, it's a very, it should be the very last page in your, there you go, Mayor.
In your right hand, there you go.
These are not in the published online packet, though.
No, and it's only, it's only the one Article 521 that applies. Article 523 doesn't apply in this, in the situations we're talking about because in the opening sentence it says, "This is for single-family detached subdivision containing 20 or more lots adjacent to existing lot," so this, this section 523, I'm not sure that that applies to the...
Why is that there if it didn't apply?
I'm sorry?
I'm asking Susan, why is it?
Well, this is information that was provided to us by the county with their latest draft saying that this is compatibility language that they're using, and this is their latest proposal. If you read the very last sentence of paragraph C, it basically says, "A new building may be located close to the street up to the minimum district setback only to the extent necessary to create a rear yard that meets the minimum rear yard setback," I meant the next sentence. "In the event that the buildings on the adjacent lots differ from each other more than 30 feet, the minimum setback for the subject lot should be the smaller actual setback of the two adjacent lots." So, there are, the county's actually proposing changes, so for example, under the old method, if a setback was 80 on one side and 40 on the other, then the average would be 60. Under this language, you would default to the minimum of one, which would be 40, so, you know, we just need direction on which way you really want to go. Do we want to keep it the way it is?
I mean, the initial request I made on February, at the February 25th meeting, was to look at revising the existing ordinance to include language that picked up five houses to either side plus the existing house. It included language that addressed corner lots being applicable or, and it also addressed or it addressed the, or eliminated the differentiation between the residential zoning designation, so it only applied, or it applied to all capital R lots that, you know, so we didn't have the situation we ran into in actual road where we had, you know, two R lots, different zoning, 85 and 100.
We're clear on what you requested, but we also had other comments, so we need direction on which avenue it is or which route you would prefer to us, for us to draft because we're hearing conflicting directions.
If everyone wants to go along with Mr. Iyer's direction, then certainly we can craft that and have that ready for you.
I'd like to look at...
But I've heard so many different conversations, I really would like a consensus so we understand what we need.
Right, I got you. Yeah, I don't necessarily agree with doing the, what Jim is asking. Again, I'm not hot about this either way, but I'd prefer just to have setbacks as what they are, which is 35 feet.
So, that would be the area regulations of the zoning ordinance itself that governs the zone.
Maybe look at moving that to 40 feet, or I don't know.
And we're certainly here to prepare and draft whatever the will of council is, so we're hearing, you know, from Councilman Iyer and all of you, so we want to put something forth for you to vet.
And I'd also be willing to look at districts where setback averaging may be helpful to a certain area or not, if it's not, I just, I just don't think having a lengthy setback averaging ordinance is helpful for most people. If we have a 35-foot setback, I mean, the setback averaging hadn't been around in DeKalb County for more than, was it 10 years or less? I don't know, I just...
Yes, it has, and it's, but it has consistently preserved the look and feel. I think to go to a 35-foot setback, you're going to dramatically change the look and feel of parts, major parts of Brookhaven by eliminating that. Just, you know, if you want an example, drive to Little Road and look at all the houses that are 30 feet off the road in a straight line, and you'll see what the city of Brookhaven will look like with the implementation of a standard front yard setback that is consistent throughout. I think that it is, it will be detrimental, and I think it will make us look more like the cookie cutter suburban residential lots that we all have moved in town to get away from.
How about, what about eliminating the setback and just doing the averaging for everything without any...
I agree with that, I mean, we've had, you know, earlier discussions that the 35 feet is left in there because obviously we brought our code over from DeKalb. There's still a lot of new undeveloped lands in DeKalb County, so that 35 feet applied for a new subdivision. You know, if you go southwest, or excuse me, southeast DeKalb, you'll see a lot of 35-foot subdivisions that were built after this law came into being because they took a field and dropped houses in it. But no, I mean, I'm not opposed to... and dropped houses in it. But no, I mean, I'm not opposed to removing that. We also need to, you know, make sure that it's referenced in all of the zoning categories, so that there's, it's clear that this applies in certain cases, but, you know, one or the other. But, you know, there may be, you know, but we do have, for instance, there's a 12-lot subdivision. We proved on Hart's Mill that, you know, there's another one that I think is gonna come in in a couple of weeks, where, you know, we will see new subdivisions, but they're gonna be 8, 10, 12 lots. And, you know, in that situation, the average or the minimum could apply, because you have no existing roads, so, or excuse me, existing houses on the road. So, you know, it's, you're gonna need some standard for situations like that, but the majority of our cases are gonna be front yard setback averaging.
I think that we need just more direction too, as well as example, the existing code with the homes on either side versus expanding that, expanding that. And I know that that was your original thought process, but just really thinking at the implication of that and getting direction from you all if you want to expand that.
The five, I mean, I know what Jim's getting, I know what you're getting at, Jim. Just to me, it starts getting into that bad government overthinking, overregulating.
I agree.
I just don't, I just don't think that that's.
I have a suggestion. Would you all be in favor of putting together a construction advisory board of real estate agents, some construction people, and let them, give them these situations, and let's see what they come back with? Because I'll come into City Hall, and I'll see a builder there, and we'll have a conversation. And inevitably, it'll go to, you know, you guys really need to look at this. You need to clean this up. You need to clean that up. And they've coming back with these comments, and I think we need to listen to them. I think they have a lot of insight, a lot of value, and I, it could be, it's good input for the conversation. They are the professionals.
Well, then we'd let residents.
I would kind of get into that too.
I would just remind you that the reason this averaging even came about, Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, but my memory of it is that there were a lot of builders coming into DeKalb that were building, you know, really oversized houses for the particular subdivision. And we're seeing that every day in, in Brookhaven, and that's not a bad thing necessarily. But the residents got very upset that their, that their neighborhoods were becoming really out of whack in terms of the harmony of them. You'd have, you know, a nice ranch-style house set way back, and then you'd have some ginormous house set way forward, and the whole look and feel of your neighborhood started being destroyed. So, it was the residents who lobbied to get this averaging setback.
We have builders that are residents.
I know.
Yeah, it was some, I mean, I know there were, there were some residents, but I don't know that that necessarily represents what Brookhaven wants.
And when there was a problem, wouldn't it have been one person who pretty much did something? But if you get a group of these people together, don't you think the general well-being of the entire community would surface?
And, and what form do you use to, for input from the residents?
Okay, well, I mean, a simple, for the residents?
I'll tell you, I've got a meeting that I've set up with some of my, my district on this, to get their feedback and input. And just, I've got a resident who's helping me coordinate public input in, on this. And I agree that this is one that we need to put on the builder's summit agenda. I just don't think we have enough information. But I, I also recall, I think, that I had mentioned, it would be nice to see what surrounding municipalities have done in this regard. You know, the big issue, when you think about a lot of our ordinances, is conformity with other areas. You know, when you, when you have a confusing law, and you've got sections, just like that noise ordinance, where you've got to go through four different sections to find what the law is. I don't want to, Brookhaven to become known as the place where you gotta, you know, don't come here, because you don't know what's in the laws, and you can't find it.
I'd like to have, you know, one thing I, I don't like one size fits all necessarily. That's one thing I kind of want to stay away from. And I think setback averaging can be beneficial in some places, and in other places, it's kind of a hindrance. So, I'd kind of like to direct staff to maybe research into what areas it could be more, I mean, maybe you can do it by Google map or something, to figure out what areas are, that setback averaging could benefit, and what areas it's not. Because I don't think we need to have a one size fits all, because every neighborhood is different.
Yeah, I'd love to see. If, if my, if our GIS department has that data and can put that on a map, that would be incredible. Because I'd love to know what, what this, how prevalent this issue is.
I think it's more important, obviously, in some areas than it is in others. And I don't want to legislate to have one policy that benefits one area and maybe hinders another area. Because, you know, there's some, R25 areas that might be a lot more sensitive or not sensitive. R100 areas, it might be less of a problem. I mean, the trend and what's gonna be happening in the future, I mean, the older houses that are set way back, people that are building new houses want the big backyard, not the big front yard. And so, I don't want to hinder people that want to put nice new big houses on R100 lots and not giving them a chance for a backyard.
You know, it, I guess it's confusing, because on one hand, you're saying that you want to, you don't want a one-size-fits-all.
Right.
But yet, there's a pushback against the setback averaging, which takes into consideration the characteristics of the neighborhood and provides a setback that is consistent with the neighborhood. It's not a one-size-fits-all. It's, it's, it's got an ebb and flow based on what's happening on that particular street. So, you know.
But five, but five houses is, seems like an arbitrary, why not do every house on the street, if you're gonna do it that way?
You know, that's what some attorneys have suggested, but they're doing that as sort of a red herring, just to take it, take it well beyond the.
If we've got some lots that have five streets that are the 1950s styles, and they're all 50 feet back. So, we used to have in DeKalb County, it looks like, 50-foot setbacks on some lots. If you take those five, there's no way you're going anywhere beyond 50 feet forward. So, you're, you're stuck conforming. There's, I mean, you're creating an exact row. Setback averaging would maintain that. If you're talking about character of a neighborhood, you would have some variability. So, I just, I think it needs more consideration. I don't know the answer, but I'd like to get more input.
I mean, I think it's important, more important to some areas than other areas. I mean, After Park, in some areas, I don't know that it's important in every area of After Park, but it's obviously very important. I don't want to deny those people, so that they like, that it's helped them. But in other areas, I don't think it is.
Maybe what you're leaning towards, or trying to describe, would be what areas have more older building stock from the 40s and 50s, as opposed to what areas have newer development from the 80s, 90s, and forward, where large, you know, tracts of land were purchased and subdivisions were built. I mean, we have that in every district. So, maybe that's the start that I can get GIS to start working on, and we can just take a look at the age of these neighborhoods.
I'd like to poll people. I'd like to hear, you know, hear what people think. I mean, doing a poll on setback averaging is gonna be almost impossible, because most people aren't gonna know what it is.
Right.
And Mike, I'm smirking over there. But, you know.
Well, let us come up with some maps for your next meeting.
Okay.
And, and we'll look at the surrounding jurisdictions and see, you know, who has setback averaging. And if they do, how do they determine that, and what formula do they use? And then hopefully, that will give you a better starting point to discuss.
Isn't this part of the comp plan?
It is, because in the character areas, that would be identified.
Right.
You know, some of the description that Mr. Iyer used, you know, where it's, it's older neighborhoods, and there is a character that's there, ranch homes. And many of those houses were either pushed back, depending on where the septic tank was. Sue wasn't here in the, in the 40s or the 50s. So, that's why some of the lots are so much larger, to accommodate the fill lines. But let us, let us start with that. You know, we want to help you, you know, reach an understanding of what you'd like, so we can have that regulated for you.
Like in Linwood Park, I mean, there are many homes that are not anywhere, they're 20 feet from the street.
Correct.
And 10, 15, and, you know, there's.
Because the older houses were at that point. You know, if you drive down and look at the older houses, they're 10 or 15 feet off the street. So, you know, that neighborhood.
All those lots are non-comforming.
Yeah. The neighborhood was developed in that manner, because they're a bunch of little shotgun houses, short lots with narrow lots. And, but the houses aren't inconsistent with what was there before they started redeveloping.
Right. I just, I'd, I'd like to look at it more, and I'd like to figure out a way to try to accommodate different areas.
Okay. We'll look at that too. And I think, again, looking at the age of the housing stock will be very telling.
And, and the size of lots.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, that'll all be part of it, and GIS can help us with that.
Yeah. I think that, as Joe pointed out, the stream buffer ordinance change was a model for how we got civic engagement, public awareness, talked about it, and came up with input from all the stakeholders. And I think kind of successful ordinance because of it. I'd love to see the same thing happen here.
And as Councilman Gebbia indicated, as we go through the planning process, as we develop that, then it will promulgate changes to the code. So, we have to go back through that public hearing exercise.
I would be really interested in knowing what our adjacent jurisdictions do. I mean, I'm just sitting here thinking about, like, historic Brookhaven. I, I would suspect those folks don't, don't want to see willy-nilly, you know, setbacks on their beautiful lots, et cetera. But I don't know what the city of Atlanta does. And so, a good chunk of historic Brookhaven is in Atlanta. I don't know what their rules are.
We'll find out. They'll, they'll be part of the, we'll survey all of those cities.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
Okay. The last item we want to talk with you about is another text amendment, which we have had previous discussions on, and I think we're ready to move into this area. And that is the text amendment to our apartment interior inspections. As you know, right now, in order to get a business license for apartment communities of four or more units, that they, the landlord-owner must produce that inspection occurred of at least one-third of the units, the interior inspection has occurred, and that they present evidence to the fact that those units that were inspected by an independent inspector are meeting code. We have found in some instances where residents have called us in because of problems that they have encountered within their units, that we found that they are not meeting code. So, what I'd like to do is come back with, to you all, with a text amendment to the apartment inspection ordinance that allows us to do audits of those 30% or one-third, 33 and a third percent of the units. And when they, when the owner submits the business license, makes the statement that these number of units have been inspected and they meet code, that we have the ability to go in and conduct our own inspection. Right now, you know that we're on our 22nd, I think we just finished our 22nd apartment complex for the exterior inspections, and that's been going very well. And I think we're ready to take this on.
One question is related to this, but we, I know we had cited some complexes for violations, and then something happened to where some, they didn't come to compliance, and they got a plea deal where they got extra time. How do we prevent that? Will you last minute, day before, give us another?
Well, I mean, all we can do is testify before the judge, and, you know, speak with our city solicitor on, you know, what we've done, and how many meetings we've had, and how much time we've given to the apartment community to reach code.
From, from a, you know, mayor perspective, and as elected official perspective, you know, well, we were all very excited about this apartment inspection program. I know it's going well.
It is.
And just to have some, some folks who never complied, didn't want to comply, get extra time, you know, wait till the last minute, it kind of undercuts what we're doing here. So, can we direct, I mean, the city solicitor's representing the city.
Correct.
I'd like some direction to the city solicitor to say.
He's on my list. In fact, this week to meet.
Uh-oh.
In fact, I'm meeting with him later this week.
Nobody's got a, has been penalized. Have they, have they yet? You want to give us a report on that, Susan?
We've had three in court. One is now in full compliance. We have one that has major issues that we did not provide any leniency to, and it did go to court. And the judge did give them additional time to do some re-roofing. And I believe he has given them a staged approach, but I think their next court date's May 7. So, that will be telling to see what they've accomplished from the last court date to now, and then we'll see what the judge does with it then.
Do we monitor that in between, or is it just from court date to court date?
For, for that particular one, it's from court date to court date. But as far as all the others that we're working with right now, we have 22 right now that we're trying to get into compliance, 22 that are, 22 that aren't, and 22 that still need to be inspected. And of those 22, we are monitoring those weekly, trying to get those into compliance to meet. The first approach is to make sure they meet life safety code.
Right.
The second is the other components of international property maintenance code.
So, the interior inspections will start when?
I'd like them to be able to start at the next business licensing period.
Which is when?
Which is in January.
Okay.
Can't start before then?
It could, if you want to make the effective date. But I would, I would be careful on how soon you make that effective date. You know, maybe once we adopt the ordinance, I would say at least 45 days from the date of adoption.
Okay.
So that if anybody may have had a marginal inspection, that they would have the opportunity to go back and quickly fix it.
The only difference by starting early is that we wouldn't have an impact on license, the actual license that would be rendered.
Well, the license is predicated on submitting evidence that they've made the inspections. And so, we, we accept that on face value. What the practice has been, by being called by residents, is what we found is they are not meeting code. So, we'd like the ability not to accept that data, that report on face value anymore. We'd like, number one, the ordinance to read that the city has the authority to cause for random inspections of the varying units that they are certifying meet code. I think that hopefully will make people more honest. And secondly, if we have a suspicion, they know we're gonna come in and inspect. And we would go through the same procedures as we are with the exterior inspection. They get so many 24 hours notice. We post the property so people understand, you know, what's, what's about to happen, so that we're not catching anybody off guard, or giving anybody a cause for concern of safety on who we are when we're just entering the property.
We, we've discussed this before, but the inspectors that are doing the interior inspections now for these apartment complexes are approved by the city of Brookhaven. Is that correct?
Correct. There, there's a list, which came over from DeKalb County. And one of the provisos that I'd like to have in the ordinance is that if we find infractions from that very inspector, that, that they cannot perform for a year or two.
That's where I was going. Yeah.
Yeah, and that, you know, didn't they, weren't they required under their, for their 14 business license to provide 100%?
It was a third, a third, and a third.
I thought it was 100% first year, and then a third, a third, a third. I may be wrong, but I thought we had them.
I'll check. But I, I thought we gave them a third, a third, and then it was 100% every year thereafter. But let me check on that for sure.
You know, so I guess.
In fact, it was 33 and a third, because I remember it was 30% before, and you all made sure it was a third.
I guess, I guess what I'm suggesting is, if it was 100%, for the, for the first year, then we already have reports.
If we're there, then we ought to be inside.
Exactly. And that, yeah, you know, give them 45 to 60 days, as you suggested, and then you start doing the random audits, because.
Can you check on that?
Yeah, I will, definitely.
That might be good.
Yeah. I think I remember that. Anyway, I, I may be wrong, but, but if we have reports in hand, I'd say, let's go ahead and start, start reviewing them.
Well, we're ready to do that.
All right. Well, let's go ahead.
I think to make our job easier, it's the integrity of the inspector that really counts in this case, because if they say a job is being done, but the residents then are coming back and say, no, they're not in compliance, I was, how many different inspectors do we have doing interior inspections, would you guess, right now, or supplying them to the city? What would be a ballpark number?
There might be a list of 20.
20?
Do we have the right to send our own?
We would send our own inspector, and that's who would go in, our own inspector.
Okay.
If we have, if we suspect that something's not up to code, that's what I want, is I want the right and the authority to be able to go in, proper notice.
Effectively, effectively, this is giving us the response, the right to audit the reports that we get from the independent inspectors.
So, so if an independent, I, I just really want clarity on this. So, if one of these inspectors approved by DeKalb come in and inspect an apartment complex, and we find that that is not the case, what is, is the penalty immediate? You're no longer validated to do interiors inspections for the city of Brookhaven? Is it a warning? What are the, what?
I think we talked about that a long time ago.
We did. I remember this.
We would not want to give a warning.
Okay, well, then, I, I, I'm agree, I agree with that. The point is, if we have 20 or 22 inspectors, I would not like to keep going back to apartment with that same inspector. I want to try and get all 22 evaluated as quickly as possible, so we know what we're dealing with. It's gonna make your job a It's going to make your job a lot easier in the long term.
We just need to have an understanding of, a better understanding of how many are on the list.
Right.
Because these are, this is a list of independent inspectors, registered residential inspectors.
Yeah.
So if you're buying a home and you want to have an inspector, you're going to go to a qualified list, and you're going to select somebody, and they're going to come in and walk the house with you. That's who's doing these inspections. The landlord is reaching out to an inspector. It's not a DeKalb County inspector. It's an independent inspector, someone whose business that does just this.
My recommendations is, to Joe's point, is there's no, there's no warning for these guys. This is their profession.
That's right.
First offense, $1,000 plus a year, you're blacklisted. Second offense, I don't know, maybe it's two years, and if there's a third.
Second offense, never again.
Yeah, I mean, second offense, never again. But here's something I do want to bring, play devil's advocate on. If they're going in and they're inspecting fire safety, and they, you know, check off that it's got a working, a smoke detector, and then you've got some tenants in there who, you know, who are always frying french fries, and they set off their alarm, and so they come and they take it down. And we go in and do an inspection, and we say, well, there's no, there's no smoke detector device there, so we're going to blacklist that guy for a year. Well, that's not really his fault, so how do we protect against that?
I think what's going to happen with that, I think the industry's going to cure itself. If an inspector knows that he's subject to an audit, I would think that that inspector, especially on the idea of the fire alarms or the smoke detectors, that when they go in and conduct those inspections, they're going to be taking photographs of what is there in that unit at the day they inspect. Because they can't be held accountable, and from the standpoint that a resident, a tenant, is going to say, I don't like that, and I'm going to take it down, or I'm going to take the screens off the, off the window and jimmy in my own little air conditioning unit.
Right.
I mean, so I think we've got to use common sense, and I think we need to be helpful too, you know, to these independent inspectors saying, look, this is what we're going to be looking for. So if that smoke detector was in there, you better take a picture with your iPhone. You got it, and attach it to your report.
Yeah, I agree. I think it's.
I think we're going to get more than just a sheet of paper saying, I inspected the following units.
Right.
You know, Joe, to answer your question about the, you know, we do have language. I'm looking at the handout that's on the, that was provided, page four of 16 at the top. It says that the inspector furnishes an inspection report which contains fraudulent information, shall be guilty of violation of the code, and can be fined by the court for each additional, for each violation. Addition certified building inspector right to submit inspection report can be suspended for a stated period of time, up to five years. So there is language in our code that allows them to be both fined and suspended based on the findings of the court. All right. We've got 20 minutes.
All right. The next item going to other business is purchasing an ethics policy, and our city attorney is here to review that with you. Well, here he is.
Somebody asked.
We have a purchase policy about here.
Okay. There you go. Oh, I need one.
And testing with our distribution.
Thank you.
All these documents that were not on the published website, are we going to upload them to?
These are our current ordinances, and they're available on the website right now.
Well, they're not part of the agenda packet.
Right.
And so typically.
Allow me to respond to that, if I may. These were drafted approximately 10 days ago, and the city manager, based particularly on the purchasing policy, she really needed to be afforded the opportunity to review that because there were such radical changes to it. And so as a result, it was not included on the website. What I would suggest is let me go do an overview of what you're looking at, since you've probably not had the opportunity to study it, and you do need to study it because both of these are very important, is that we publish them for the next meeting, and then schedule this again for the work session to talk about, and not necessarily to act upon until the following meeting in May, if that's acceptable. Okay, all right. All right, you have two, you have, one is a change to the code of ordinances in chapter two for the code of ethics. Really, the purpose of the change in the code of ethics was to really bring to light more clarity to what the ethical violations could be, particularly as it related to relationships. If you look at the section 2.402 definite, one definitions, the term appointee is now defined as any person, any council mayor, any person who holds office, which would include the city manager, which would include me, which would include the city clerk, which would include whatever charter document there is, any member of the planning commission, or any board that has a quasi judicial function, which right now there are two. There's going to be one more that's going to be created relating to building matters, but the two we have now are the alcohol review board and ZBA. And then finally, any member of any authority to which the city makes an appointment. So what this leaves out of this ethics policy, and it's also this definition will flow through to the purchasing policy, those that serve on commissions, other than the planning commissions, that have no, you know, really no influence over what takes place, i.e. if you're creating these various commissions to evaluate parks and whatever, then those persons are outside of it. The term city staff, as it's used in here, also includes vendors, the vendor as an entity or the vendor as an individual, as well as employees, and it also includes the employees of vendors. So that's questioned, you know, so that has been clarified by that or amplified, so that there's no question that employees of vendors are also subject to this ethics code. Then family member, which we had before, where they were using the words in-laws, you know, brother, sister. I went to the Georgia Code to really come up with the definitions of what the familial relationship should be based upon blood, and have made those changes. So in the situation where you have an in-law that's not married to blood in-law, then it's not an in-law. So it's, that's, is there. So this really follows the state law with regard to that.
Say that again.
Okay, all right. Let's take the situation where you have, you're married to a person, okay, who had, and they have a mother and father, all right? Let's see if I can get this right. And they have a mother or father, but.
You're the son of those two.
Now, that'd be, that'd be.
I shouldn't have asked that question.
That'd be insane.
All right. Let's look at it this way. You have a mother and father, okay, all right, and you're, trying to get to the situation.
Biological.
And your mother, and your mother remarries, okay? And you have a father-in-law that's not blood, he doesn't count. He's outside of it. However, you get caught in different areas in this, as you'll see. The term financial interest.
What about a stepbrother?
No.
No?
No.
You know, Tom, I can see where you're going with this, but I just have to stay right up front. Isn't it really what we're trying to look at here is where there's spheres of influence?
Well, that's what I'm getting.
Okay, I'll let you go. I'm sorry. I'll let you be.
All right. There was, there was what was called a financial interest and substantial interest in both of these, and they're here. And what those have been expanded is to really discuss those with you. What was termed in the old code as substantial interest is now what I'm showing as a financial interest. And that means, you know, funds received by a member from the other person or entity during the previous 12 months either equal to or exceed a $5,000 in salaries, or $5,000 in payments for goods and products or services. That's out of your current code. 10% of the member's gross income during that period, whichever is less, that comes out of your code. The member is a creditor, debtor, or guarantor of another person of an entity in the amount of $5,000 or more. All right? And that really looks to the financial interest, say that you would, you may very well have, for example, from your employer, if you make more than $5,000 a month, that would apply there. What is really changing here is this terms of substantial interest to cover really a more broad form of relationship, direct or indirect ownership of 25% of the assets, or of the ownership interest in or any business or property. Now, our current code says 10%. State law uses 25%. I suggest you follow state law unless you want to go back to something more restrictive as 10%. But this has also been expanded to include assets, which in turn can relate to interests as it relates to zoning type applications, any types of things where you may have a property interest in it versus just not a business interest. The holder of any evidence of indebtedness of any business for borrowed money. So if you were to have a business and somebody had lent money to that business, then that's a substantial interest associated with that. Then I say any director, manager, trustee, there's a type of there, officer or employee of any business. Okay, that grabs everybody. So if you have a kid working for a vendor, you know, that's, that's a problem. However, if the vendor is registered as a publicly traded company, let's say the vendor's IBM, then that takes out, that's exclusion, as long as that employee's not a director, manager, trustee, officer. Okay? So but in case of an employee, so if you, you know, so if your daughter's working for IBM and they're not involved in any bid or anything like that, then that's okay. You know, that doesn't, that doesn't kick IBM out of being a vendor. So those were the, those were the changes, which were really the substantial changes as it related to the definitions.
Can we, we need to, we're not going to consider this tonight, right?
No.
So, because we have limited time, can we go to the purchasing?
Absolutely. Okay. The purchasing policy has been modified in which I, what I've considered to do is has been cleaned up dramatically. But the biggest change is it.
Where is that? Is that in our packet?
This big, fat one right here. So as far as the editorial changes, I won't discuss those. What's, what is now intended to do is to not only provide for goods and services in the context of what the old ordinance did, as well as professional services, real estate acquisition, which was discussed in the old ordinance, but it's been expanded to include leases of real property and the like. And then I've also added capital assets to it. So in effect, this is one policy as it relates to purchasing of all services, goods, and assets, and professional services relative to that.
On the, Maria, I talked to you about this earlier on, on purchasing policy, on expanding your authority to $50,000 for contracts.
Right.
How do we, how do we deal with putting that on the agenda for, is that for the next agenda for next week?
The, her authorities, is the authority of the purchasing agent, i.e. city manager, is covered in here.
Is it, is it up to 50? Because that's one change I wanted to.
What section is that?
It is 50 now.
No, it's, no. It's 10. It starts on the bottom.
Whatever you want to change to, because I bracketed it.
Where is that page?
Starts at the bottom, I think, section 12, bottom of page 14.
There's on page 15.
It goes to 15.
Okay.
But it is covered in here.
Well, no, I'm sorry, that's, that's purchasing agent, that's not city manager.
Well, now, that's, that's, right now, the purchasing agent in here is defined as the city manager.
Oh, okay.
Or her designate. But any contract has to be signed by her, or.
So this purchasing policy that says ensure all procurements have over $50,000 have council approval. Is that the same as contracts?
Well, so that number would have to, that number would, if that number is over, that is in there, anything over $50,000 requires council.
But I thought our present policy was 10% or 10.
No, it was $50,000. Anything over $50,000, if it's between $50,000 and 10, then it can either go to council or the policy allowed the notice to all of the council members.
Correct.
For permission for the, to enter into the contract, and if there were, you know, if a majority said no, then it got on the next council agenda.
Right.
And then the number went from as far as $10,000, from $10,000 or below, then no action was required.
I would like to change that to 50 rather than 10.
All right.
Anything over 10 goes before the council. That's my, I need to hear from everybody else, but.
Okay, well, I think that's a matter, you know, that you all need to discuss, and do you want to?
Let's discuss it. Let's discuss it.
You know, I haven't had a chance to go through all of this yet, and I'm, I think I hear you saying that you want to have council approval on everything above 10.
Above 50.
Yeah. Well, let's read through this, but, yeah, I think that's, all we had before was just a notification. I think we've somehow got out of line with that, and our city manager is.
We had approval.
Up to 50.
From 10 to 50, 10 to 50, there was approval.
Yeah, it was.
Neither majority voted.
Yeah, I think that that's unnecessary burdensome on our city manager.
And as you read this, you know, you have, you have the ability, but it has to have been appropriated for.
Right, it's in the budget.
It has to have been in the budget. Otherwise, if it's not in the budget and hadn't been appropriated for, then there's no authority to do it.
Right. I'd just like it on the next agenda for consideration. We can talk about it, and I'd like to have it increased to 50, put on the agenda to see what, if that passes.
Are these the final changes that you're proposing?
To the purchasing policy?
Yeah, the document we were handed tonight.
Yeah, what you've been handed here tonight is what I suggest and what I recommend, but also it expands to all other areas that haven't been covered that we do deal with. And also, you'll find that there are some distinctions between the types of services, i.e. professional services, which can go through the processes of not bidding, okay, but through the RFQ process, which was an issue that we had before. And so that issue that we had before has now been dealt with in this, in this, in this purchasing policy.
I'd like to just make two comments on this, and.
We've got to move on.
We can move on.
Real fast.
Two important comments. One is, this whole conversation about 10 to 50 was a byproduct of us trying to be very, very conservative in how we were approaching this whole issue, basically as a backlash to what had been going on for years and the inability to maintain a check and balance. That's the first comment. Second comment is, I'm in agreement with the $50,000 level. I think, but what we do, and I'm really in favor of it because I know the quality of the work that's being done by a city manager, I trust that we have, but the policy that we put in effect has to be a policy that has to live beyond a particular person. So as far as a check and balance, what I would like to suggest is do the $50,000, but once a quarter, just have a recap of all the, all the $50,000 bids that were issued, just for review, as a check and balance for council to stay on top of what's going on. Is that fair?
Does that include, and I think we need to be sure we all understand this, for items that have been budgeted, the council has already approved of why they're actually that have been budgeted, the council has already approved on either action of the adoption of the budget. So that does not require coming back through.
I think it's just a reported requirement is what is added.
Right.
Yeah.
No, I just wanted to...
Okay. Because what had happened previously or alleged is that there were a number of...
Not with our city.
Not with our city, right, but in, it doesn't even have to be around locally to us, it could be around the country, where you've had municipalities doing just under the maximum allowed and doing it repeatedly. So that's where I think we need to just have a check and balance. So if we're not here, you're not here, there's something in place that has continuity. So once a quarter, just come back and list what was done. It's a simple check and balance. Yeah.
And Tom, where is the language that says that as long as this is a budgeted amount? Is that in here somewhere?
It is. I will locate it for you if you would want to continue talking.
All right. Okay. I don't want, we've got to go to sidewalk and paving update. So if you could get that and...
I'll, let me, I'll show it to you. Why don't you go ahead and do that update, and I'll, I'll look forward to it.
All right. All right, Richard.
Tom, nice job on the ethics part.
Thank you, yeah.
That was very thorough.
Okay, thank you.
This one?
Harry, was there anything you want to say before?
No, go ahead. Thank you.
First of all, on the paving update, we did, we had started the work, and we did get one road completed. That was Stratfield Circle, or Stratfield Drive, sorry, from that stretch of Stratfield Circle. Working with the paving contractor, they had scheduling conflicts and they haven't been able to work because of scheduling conflicts the last couple weeks. They were supposed to get back on finishing up the rest of the roads starting next week. It affected us, where it did affect us is on Pamela Drive. We were hoping to get that done last week during spring break. Unfortunately, because of their scheduling conflicts, we weren't be able to get this, that done.
How do we not know about the scheduling conflicts before the paving began?
It's, we did, it's work, it's working with contractors. I do have Jesse Bailey, who's with the contractor, is here, he can explain, if you want, would like to hear from him, he can explain more. But, you know, basically, they had a conflict with the scheduling and they weren't, they started our job, they had to get work, they had to finish another job and pull the crews off. We've been working with them and constant communication.
So the other jobs are more important than our?
It was a job that they had, was originally scheduled to occur before our job, but the work, they, they were waiting on the contractor. It's the, it's at the airport, PDK, and the contractor that they were waiting on before they could start the paving, that's why they started our work. But then the airport said, we're ready to start paving, and because it was one that they had scheduled before us, that's why they had to go do that one. So...
They didn't have additional crews that they could put on Pamela? I mean, or bring in a...
No.
A subcontractor to...
No.
How do we?
Do we have a backup paver?
How do we get this?
On this, on this one, we didn't, because of the way, for this paving, you know, what we're going to do on the next, when we do the next round of paving, is we are going to have multiple contracts available to do this. You know, we're going to do it as a formal request for bid to get unit prices, get it approved, and potentially have, have the potential, depending on how the bids come in, of having multiple contractors available to do this and schedule it. So, so that's on the paving, but they should, they're expected to get back on with, they're supposed to be finished out at the airport next, middle of next, by the middle of next week and get back on.
It wouldn't, you know...
To finish ours, wear the next one up.
Richard, it wouldn't be that big of an issue if we haven't had delay after delay.
I agree.
There's weather, there's other...
I agree.
Other things, and it sounds like we're going to be in May before we get our second street paved from last year.
2013.
And, and can we look at another contractor? Can we have a backup? Can we have some kind of plan that, so that we can?
On this one, you know, we're, they've already started the work, because they've already done some of the prep work on three of the, three of the other four roads. And so for this one, you know, by the time we could get another contractor on board, they're going to be able to come back on and finish it. But I know, like I said, on the 2014 plan, we are going to do it, approach it a different way than we did on this one.
Can you have it where you have another contractor on standby, like Jim was saying, like a sub or something that can, because I don't want to be in 2015 doing 2013 work.
Right, no, we won't. We're, we're going to make sure that's a, that's a requirement of the request. Part of it is with the request for bid that we will be putting out, schedule will be part of, that, part of that request for bid on this upcoming contract.
Is that, is that, when will that bid go out?
If it's a, if the paving plan is approved tonight, I mean, we're trying, I got to get with Marie and with Brad on purchasing on that, but we're trying to get that out in the next two to three weeks. Put the, we have a draft RFB, kind of started working with language in there, but I got to get with them on final language when we can put that out.
So once we approve it, when will it be put out?
Within the next, within the next three weeks, we'll get the RFB out. And some of it, I got to go with Marie and Brad on the...
We're going to make that shorter than three weeks.
We'll make that shorter, yeah.
And how long is the bid period?
I think, I want to say it's going to be 20, at least 21 days for the bid period. I got to look at the, the policy, but normally, we want to give them at least three weeks to, to be able to...
So we're looking at minimum six weeks of the, of the second meeting in, in May before the final contract comes back to us. Is that...
Probably, probably, oh, either that or...
Could be June?
Could be the first week. But we were, and all along with the paving, I mean, we're anticipating starting the paving in, you know, late April to get the bid out, and then starting paving in late May or early June was the, always the schedule, and have the paving go through the summer time into the early fall.
So April 30th, we'll have the bid out?
No, no.
That's two weeks.
That's too soon.
No, we're going to do it less than that.
April 30th is nanned next week.
No, it's, April 30th is two weeks.
It's two weeks from now. We need to, we'll ramp up and see what we can do with Lo to get somebody else to help Richard on that, so that we can get this bid prepared and ready in a week.
Okay.
And so that way, we can save two more weeks instead of being a six-week process, so we can get it down to at least a 21-day review for bids, and then to open, and then to, to launch. And what we need to do too is, once bids are open and we award, and the contract is then reviewed by our attorney, then I'd like to have a proviso when they're get, upon execution from the mayor and approval by the council, that within 72 hours, they start. So...
All right.
So we can get them staged and get them ready to go.
All right. And there was a couple, council can help me, but there was, you were getting, I think, today, is, or is Carl here?
Carl's not here today.
Wouldn't there, wouldn't there a couple things due as far as like the Dresden, studying the, the pipe at Dresden?
Yeah, we did look at Dresden. I can give you a quick update on that. There, on Dresden itself, we found, we looked at the pipe, whatever, the work we can do and the, needs to be done on the pipe can be done from inside the pipe. It doesn't have to be, we don't have to dig up the road to do it. We've worked with DeKalb County, and DeKalb County, we were planning on just going out there, we had the work order ready to go to do, remove the plate and repair the dip. Before we got out there, DeKalb County got out there and removed the plate and put some asphalt in the dip. We're looking to see how that's holding up right now, how that transitions. The Dresden itself, that port of Dresden is on the paving plan for 2014, so we're going to evaluate to see if we have to do anything with that dip before we do the paving plan or if we're just going to...
So before we're waiting on to see if we could do something to the pipe, now that somebody's coming, DeKalb's coming and put, that's what we have to wait on to see what's going to happen with the dip?
No. The, a lot of the repair was, we were waiting on doing the repair on the dip and the plate to see if we had to dig up the road for the pipe. We don't have to dig up the road for the pipe. DeKalb has fixed the road basically for now.
When did they do that?
They did it last week.
Okay.
So...
Is that something that, will they coordinate with us on?
No, they just come out and, it was theirs to do anyway, because it was their waterline break. They just were slow in getting to it, and they finally got to it before we got our work order. We could get our crews out there to repair, to do that one.
Well, what's the point of...
Is the dip, is the dip from a waterline repair or is the dip from a faulty storm drain pipe?
The dip is just some base failure, and it could be because, it could be a little bit of both. It, you know, but we didn't want to dig the dip, we didn't want to go and just patch the dip if we were going to have to dig the whole road up to replace the pipe that goes in that same area. But we don't have to dig up the road for the pipe, but the question, you know, where we're going to be repaving and as part of the repaving will, can fix that dip. Do we send our crews out now to fix it?
Well, I want to, hold on a second. What I always want to get at is that last meeting, we were talking about Dresden being a kind of an important...
Yes.
That section in particular. Correct me if I'm wrong, am I recounting here? And you'd said we couldn't do anything until we evaluated the stormwater pipe under it, because that was, whether we had to dig it out, like you just said, and y'all needed some time to get a study to get down there and do that.
Right.
So you did that, but now, because DeKalb County unannounced came and repaired it, we're going to have to wait to see what they're repairing.
No, no, we're not going to, basically, they repaired the, most of the problem that was existing there. So we don't have to, as, as a high priority item, it's no longer a high priority item to replace, to fix what's remaining there, because they fixed the biggest problem, which was the plate in the road. They've already fixed that. So...
Well, having driven that road today, I can tell you, it is still a disaster, and you will bottom out here when you drive across it.
Okay.
Now, I, I think it's on the paving schedule. I don't want us to spend that money unnecessarily. It is better, but...
And that's what we're going to look at. They did the work on Friday, and we, you know, with the rain yesterday and today, we haven't had a chance to get out there and evaluate yet to see. And there's a chance, if we need to, if it is bad, we will do something with that dip, even to put some temporary material in there to, to level it out.
Yeah.
Until, but it is on the paving list too, so we don't want to, you know...
You know, I'd, I'd say, I mean, I defer to your expertise on it, but whoever did that fix, I mean, Dresden Drive did not used to be that bad there.
Right.
And if there was a waterline break and then a subsequent fix of it, it looks to me like that, that party was responsible and did a really bad job of repairing it, because it's horrible now compared to what it was previous to the thing. And I don't know if that's our sewer system that did that or the water, but...
I don't know. It, it more than likely is related, I can't say without digging it up.
Let me jump, jump topics real quickly and on Dresden Drive though, still. So we have half of Dresden Drive fully developed on that side from, we're talking about from L&J to Apple Valley on the paving schedule.
Yes.
So half of that road is pretty much fully developed. I thought we had a ordinance that we're either considering or it's a policy that new multifamily developments are going to be responsible for repaving the road if they do curb cuts. The second side of Dresden, the drive that has not been developed between L&J and Apple Valley, will be doing a lot of curb cuts or a lot of road cuts. And I don't want to, I don't want us to come in there and make a beautiful new road and then have it cut into.
Well, but you're actually only talking about a quarter of it, because the, the section from, from Trentwood Parkside up to Apple Valley...
Right, right.
We own one side, you know, which is the Parkside side.
Yeah, the fire station.
Yeah, you're talking about the section from L&J to...
Yeah. I don't want to hold it up. I just think it's something that, that we need to consider. I don't want us to pave it when the contract's going to have to pave that little section.
I think the key is requiring the developer to, if they do screw up the road, they need to come in and, and mill it and repave it out to the center line, which is typically what, you know, what's required.
Do we have this in, in force now, this policy?
It's one that we're doing as far as with our land development, with our LDPs or putting things like that in as requirements as part of the LDP, but on major developments and major subdivisions. You know, if it's a single home rebuild, we're not doing it, but if it's multiple, you know, if it, if it's a new subdivision or if it's a commercial, we are.
Sidewalk update?
Sidewalks, Windsor Parkway, they've started construction on the Windsor Parkway one. We have, we submitted the purchase order for Harts Mill and Apalachee. The Apalachee purch order, purchase order's been approved. I was waiting on approval of the Harts Mill purchase order. And on Curtis, we've got, we're just waiting on the contractors to give us back prices. And we should get those in the next day or two.
Cusawatie?
Have you been in touch with Stephen Wilkins?
I wasn't able to get ahold of him, but I, I need to follow up with him. That was on my list this week to get...
He's going to cut your red tape, right?
Yeah, I know. It's, it's been more just getting with the contractors and getting them a price, getting them to give us prices back on it.
Cusawatie?
Having, you know, the direction I was given by the city manager was to hold off on that one for right now.
All right. Well, let me direct city manager to make sure that you put a priority of Cusawatie over Apalachee, because kids, strollers, pedestrians are going to get hit on Cusawatie, whereas Apalachee is very low traffic.
All right. I, I will say, just to bring up, that we have had a, they, we haven't seen official plans yet, but there is, on three of the lots there, where the sidewalk is, are going to be coming in for single-family residential homes.
Yeah, up north.
No, south. They're right by the, right after, just north of the curve, they're going to come in.
Oh, there's a new plan?
There's, just for building three homes on the existing lots.
What's, you're talking at the corner of?
Just north with that sharp curve. There's three existing lots.
That was never on the sidewalk section.
Yeah, well, that was, okay.
That was never...
Oh, the, you're talking about the area north up by Cardaque is what you're talking about.
Yeah, yeah, it's north. It's going down the hill, but it's...
Do you have the paving list, Richard?
I, I have the one copy. There should have been a copy in the agenda packet, a full copy. I, I just have one copy that...
While he's looking for that, if I may, on some of these sidewalks that he has mentioned, one including Harts, Harts Mill and Cudawassee, we are now over the allotted amount that you all approved.
Right.
So you're going to be getting an email from me about, that I'm going to look for host funds to pull out of there so that we can continue and have this, this momentum. So please be aware of that. That's why the Harts Mill was not signed, because for those, for that district, we already exceeded the amount.
All right.
I remember there was some sharing of projects in two districts, so there should be some credit back, but...
Right. Can you be available during the regular council meeting?
Yes, I am. I will be here during the regular council meeting.
Okay.
For the paving list?
Yeah, that's fine.
All right. Redevelopment power, is there an update?
All I'm going to say is the bill's signed by the governor. That's it.
All right.
Excellent.
Stay tuned for further direction in the coming weeks.
Is there a motion?
I'm going to adjourn the work session.
A second? All right. All in favor of German, sign if I'm saying aye. All opposed?
Aye.
All right. I, I don't hear it.